What do I need?
If you decide to exercise your woman's authority out there, you cannot be in this project.
I didn't have a problem with that because you make a point about something like the city project area. So they can use it on the project area, which technically my concern was if the part of the project area is inside. So I'm a little bit concerned. That was my concern that he brought up with that, because it's just a project.
I would think, and I'm kind of looking at the code because I thought it was all outside of the city limits. They won't do anything in the city limits.
That's what I'm saying.
That's a special lease term.
That, that right now is currently Mark puts aside and says.
I, I see that, but they can't put more towers on this lot, I'm saying, you know.
They could, I mean, but most of the concern I have is that they put one here.
Not without the city's authority, because I'm sure that we have a special lease term required for that.
So I'd ask the question.
If not, what do you do?
I, I thought I'd ask the question. Yeah. Well, I mean, we're still going to agree with the staff. I mean, there's a mission thing, I mean, and then that's all. Yeah. We're, we're doing all the stuff we need to do, yeah. 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 Yeah.
Hey Terry.
If you got a second afterwards, Pat.
Stand in line, Terry.
All right. Just don't forget about me.
I won't.
That's what happens, you take off in DC and have fun.
I should've just kept going.
Call the Ogusby City Council meeting to order.
Augubright.
Here.
Cullenin.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Udis.
Here.
Revara.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments on agenda items only. Bring them, we'll move on. I need a motion and second to approve the minutes of the February twenty first, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the February twenty first, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Approve bills in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-seven cents as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to approve bills in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-seven cents as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Introduction of Ogusby newest police officer, Scott, is it Newfle?
Nufte. Nufte.
Nufle.
Nufte.
Sorry about that, enter the office.
I apologize.
You were close.
Scott, you want to come on up? Just right, right over here.
Front and center. Floor's yours.
I state your name.
Aye, Scott Nufte.
To solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
To solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution, Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Enforce the state laws and the city ordinance impartially.
Enforce the state laws.
And city ordinances.
And city ordinances.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of patrolman to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of patrolman to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard.
The, a presentation by Kevin Nicholson of Nicholson Communications on emergency repairs on the police radio. System after a lightning strike.
Do you want to go up to the, okay, I'll keep it, then we'll have you go to the podium when you pass out, Kevin.
You can give them, I'll get one if, if there's enough, thank you.
This is the, the grounding, the power currently is not grounded at all, or at least what we call grounding.
Thank you.
What we're planning on doing is having your electrical guys work on it, I'm going to go ahead and advise them on what to do so that the grounding actually is up to code. It's going to be, it's costing you guys nothing for my services, for free. Um, what we're going to bring it up is one ground ring around the tower with twenty-eight ground rods going in. They'll be trenched out at three feet down, there'll be ground rods eight feet below that, okay? They'll all be cat welded in, then there'll be another one around the building with nine ground rods around it, three foot down. Then they'll both be cat welded together, and then inside the building, there'll be a ground bar on the outside, ground bar on the inside. There'll be a halo ring around the inside of the building. Every piece of equipment will be grounded to that, including the water pipe, the, um, electrical panels, everything, if, anything that's metal inside the building will be grounded to the actual ground system. Coming down the coac, down after any, uh, coax on the top, we've grounded the top of the tower, we've grounded the bottom of the tower. We've grounded it before they get into the building on the primary, we call that primary suppression. Then on the secondary suppression, that will be after we get inside where all the surge protectors will be located right inside the building. So even if it makes it into that, it won't even make it into the building. To give you an idea, we've done this grounding at Thompson Prison, um, WQAD, I mean, had a lot of main structures. We've taken sixty, seventy pits with lightning, not one damage.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Sorry, go ahead.
I've got some, you mean, we didn't have that grounded at all, the system wasn't grounded at all?
You, you had it grounded, I want to show you this picture here, these are pictures of your site, okay? This is your official ground, which is the water pipe.
So let me, let me ask you, because, because when Terry told me about this, I inquired about that saying.
No.
When Terry told me about this, I was confused, saying, we don't have our towers grounded? And the story I got was that when they were constructed, the only requirement at the time was that they're grounded to the water pipe. So this whole rig is to make it to code now, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I, I understand wha- what you're saying, I guess my question is why it wasn't done to begin with?
Should've been done about twenty years ago.
Sure.
Any, anybody that's putting in equipment in there, should've been grounded, if you've got, uh, fiber optic equipment out there and everything else, all that we've grounded will be protected. Blow out your fiber optic equipment, you're probably looking at about twenty, thirty thousand dollars, just in equipment alone, just in that, you did blow out all the RF, every radio piece of equipment in there got blown out. It's thirty thousand dollars with radio equipment you just blew up in a matter of one strike, and not even count the surge protectors.
Okay, by, by, I, I understand the grounding and the cad weld and tying it all together, and that'll give us the protection that we need. It's basically the same thing we have at some stations.
Well, what we've wanted, we wanted to take the lightning hit.
Sure.
We want the equipment to operate while it's even, while it's there, I want a hundred and fifteen volts to be operating, a hundred and twenty, to be operating even at a hundred thousand negative volts, it's still operating. And like I said, we've been spraying counters on a lot of our towers, we've taken sixty, seventy hits at, in the given couple of years, and never had a, a full piece of equipment.
Okay, my, my other question is, this ju- this just took out the police radios. What about, if I am, if I'm understanding it correctly, what about the fire and ambulance radios? Are they grounded properly?
Yeah, because they're on a separate tower.
Yeah, if, if, everything that's in that tower there, that's on the south, what is that, what tower is that up, the one that's coming off of I, right next to I thirty-nine?
West Walnut.
The west tower?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's just for that tower only.
Okay, but our other tower is grounded properly?
I haven't seen that one, I would just call around here on just that tower alone. If it is, if it is needed, I'll work with Mark from the Electrical Division and we'll get that one grounded too, did it the same way.
So we, we need to check it?
Yes, yes, we will check that too, we'll get that from up and going too. As I said, it's no coincidence you're using your own electrical guys, which I highly recommend doing.
Sure, they can, they can.
And he, he's very capable of doing the job, he's, I've already talked to him on the phone, I've actually met with him, and he's, he's one percent way to doing this. He's ordered a lot of the equipment already too.
Excellent, so one of my, I guess my follow-up question is, so when I asked about that, I, I was told that our Phoenix substation, or not, sorry, the Malik Rose Substation was newer. So that has the, apparently this whole rod system around it, but the, but the Phoenix one that we have, it has something similar to that, but he says it might not be adequate enough. So I don't know if that's something that we should look into as well, because we have recently, within a week ago, took a lightning strike and did take, did take a circuit out.
Okay, um, if you can reach out to Mark.
We'll do that.
I will be working directly with Mark on that, as I said, it's costing me nothing, I'm just going to make sure he brings it up and we'll, I'll actually do a complete survey on it, make sure everything is, is right. I'm going to bring him my own meter down here, make sure everything is actually one percent like it's supposed to be, and make sure that it's good on the side. So I, this one here, I mean, we're putting in almost, like I said, up thirty-seven ground rods on here, and it'll, like I said, it'll last you another fifty years probably.
That'd be great, yeah, I'd like to know if, if we need to upgrade the Phoenix substation as well. Again, I'm told we have some kind of ground rod system around the perimeter, but again, that's also very old, so I don't know if it's up to code or.
Jason, I'd, I'd like him to check all our subs. We've got Phoenix, we've got, uh, uh, the Malik Substation, we also own part of the, uh, the substation that's down by Bootsy. We need, we need all them checked.
I'll work, as I said, get that information to Mark and I will do that, because I said, I won't touch anything, we'll just go in here and do it. That way, we make sure it is, if it is, he can work, he can do all the equipment, all the work upgrades on it. And I said, I'm going to check his CAD welds because I'm really thinking on that, it doesn't have to be a total CAD weld, but it's being irreversible thing. I go CAD weld because it's a complete bond, it's never coming apart, that's the only reason I go CAD welds, it's the best. If he needs it, I got two valves that can stop.
He'll be in touch with you tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I just, we, we want it done at the highest level to make sure the equipment, especially when we're talking public safety, because when it blows it out, their, their lives are in danger. Like I said, this is your coax's, as you can see on here. They're coming down at the bottom of the water tower here, they're splitting and going into LMR cable and going into this tube and then into the thing. You can't put these in ground. We'll put these up, they'll be up about eight feet up in air, you've already got two of them coming across here.
Was that to code like thirty years ago, something like that?
That's not even about thirty years ago, that's never.
So it was never to code?
Should've been covered at the beginning with.
Yes, uh, anybody comes in here with a weed whacker, cuts them right off, they're dark towers, let's just go. Yeah.
Who did that job? How old's the water tower, can I ask a question? That's when they did it.
Yeah, it, it's just, it, it should, it, it should've been across the top, and you already have a couple that are across the top already. We're going to actually tie to them and bring it across top, and then we'll actually bring the ground, so the ground rods will be up here, everything, it'll come right into the halo system. And that way the lightning actually flows all it's supposed to flow, right, be a continuous flow straight down the ground. It's, any right angles, lightning does not take right angles, it just, it's got to have a continuous path, okay? This is the test meter, which is called a site analyzer, when I put it on your antenna, at a hundred and forty feet, she's dead short it out. It blew, it came in on the RF, came in, uh, it basically, it came in on the antenna, which we knew that because it blew out the equipment, but we just wanted to analyze to make sure it didn't come in electrical, it did come in the antennas. It did blow out the, you can see it comes, these are the, what they're called rings.
That's your scientific method of looking for the burn mark, huh?
Yeah, and, and as you say, it's supposed to go up, not down. So right here at a hundred and forty feet, this is three hundred, zero, it shot it right down the ground, right there at that, and that's at the top, right at.
Jumped it.
Right where the antenna's at, okay?
Let me ask you, what about our radio systems at, uh, at the fire and, and police station, are they grounded properly?
You talking over at the actual police station?
Yes.
Probably not, I, I remember that system going back twenty, twenty-five years ago, I was, did a lot of work down here at that time. At that time, it was down in the basement, you guys had a nine-one system down there, your one-nine-one system, it was down in the basement down there. That's been abandoned since then, but there was no ground crews at that time.
So.
Matter of fact, one of your operatives actually got hit by lightning, came in here.
So, so in other words, before you get out of here, we not only do we need to take care of this, but come and check every. Every place that were, were hooked up.
And I, like I said, I'll work with Mark on that, just give, make sure he gets it, and then I will work with him and get, make sure everything is up to code.
And for, that's what we have to do?
Yeah, I'm also worried about, you know, the end equipment, because they're all portable and everything on that. We're mo- mostly worried about the head and end equipment, which is called like the water towers and the, the main stations, because lightning's going to hit them, it's going to knock you out, it's going to knock out the bigger performance of it, okay?
Well, I'm concerned about the safety of the people in the field.
Oh, yeah.
And if you're having a storm and lightning, and all of a sudden we get a disconnect, uh, we, we can't have that.
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll.
And thank you for, for pointing out to us.
I will, um, send all the actual color photos, I'll send them over to Terry so he's got them, and then he can go ahead and get that to your insurance company, so the insurance company should pay for your RF equipment. Um, they're not going to pay for the upgrade on the ground, but they're probably going to remind you that, hey, if you don't get this grounding done, they're not going to do it the next time.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah, so just.
Understood. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin, just to update the council, so the bid for just the equipment that was ruined, um, came to thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. I authorized an emergency, uh, payment of half of that to Kevin to, to get the stuff ordered, so we have a check made out for sixteen thousand, eight sixty to him. Uh, I do anticipate this will be covered by insurance, so I, Amy and I have started a claim, and we're waiting to see where that goes.
Do you need a motion to get whatever the rest of the stuff is, so you can get it ordered and get it here?
It's ready ordered, th- this will be, the rest of it will be due on, on completion.
Okay.
But keep in mind, none of the grounding is going to be covered, and the way I understand, we're looking at probably about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars to put that system in, with the grounding.
Okay, I'll find out if it's, it just equipment, we need to order components, or if it's a whole bid process, I'll find out from Mark if that's the case, and I'll bring it to the next council.
Yeah, this is still going to be kind of an emergency thing to get up and running, so keep that in mind.
Do we need, do we want to authorize something for that purchase right now, or, I mean, if it's just components, we can get the components, but.
I think Kevin already gave Mark the equipment he needed to order, didn't you?
Yeah, I've been, I've been talking to Mark, uh, all day today, so he's always ordered something, he's trying to get it all ordered right now. All part of all your basic equipment, and I'm already ordered that, that, that.
Okay.
Pat, do we have to do a motion or anything on that for that amount?
I think it would be a good idea to do that, to have the council authorize that emergency expenditure.
Should we, you think we should do the grounding with it, up to a certain amount, since we don't have an exact?
Might, might as well.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars to replace the equipment, and up to thirty thousand dollars on the equipment for the grounding.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Next on the agenda is approved bid for East Walnut Street parking lot. The, uh, bids came in, um, for concrete, from advanced asphalt concrete, a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred. Asphalt was seventy-nine, Operman Construction Concrete was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred, twenty-three dollars. Universal Asphalt came in, uh, at, uh, Concrete was eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. The, um, uh, Asphalt was fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy. Uh, there was a concern raised about, uh, that the, um, uh, when the building was torn down, it, uh, it wasn't compacted properly. So I'll leave our engineer address that.
Yeah, so they still need to finish grading, you know, and do some compaction and stuff like that, then we'll check it. Um, I'm not overly concerned about it, like, you might, we need broader requirements because we're not running similar, as large as we're trying to, it's life duty, so.
So part of the tear down bit had nothing to do with compaction or fill or anything?
Well, most of it was slab on brick, had small basements to the back.
Okay, so no. Okay, I'm just making, I, I figured that'd be part of the bid, that's why I'm asking that question, but from what you're telling me, that wasn't in the bid at all? You, you were the engineer on it, so I thought you'd be paying attention to it, so.
I wasn't there.
Okay.
My guy wasn't there twenty-four seven, so.
Yeah, I had a, I had a citizen bring a concern to me about it, and from his account, he told me that he didn't think it was done correctly, so that's why I'm, I was bringing it up tonight.
If they can come up to us and tell them, tell us how it was done, we'll.
One of the things we have to get done yet is get squared away with the property owner in, in back of there.
So why, why are we paving if we don't have that done yet?
So the property owner, we don't need any, any property, we have it for him to give his pool off, city property, that's it. We don't need any land from him to park.
So we're not swapping any property, okay?
He didn't want to do that, so we moved on to parking lot and made it fit.
Okay.
And he said at that meeting he would move the pool, that's what we need.
Okay.
Um, I had a couple people ask me about, uh, the entrance and the exit on that, is it going to go through the alley, or is it?
No.
It's just going to be a horseshoe?
Correct.
Well, it won't be a horseshoe.
Well, yeah.
If you pull, pull in, park in on, and back out.
Back out, okay. I had a couple people who were concerned about the, the through, the throughway going through the alley.
What's the compaction rate of the ground right now at the pit?
Drew, we have, we have two sections in this council meeting, you're going to, you can make public comments on agenda items, and then down here at, at the end, we have a, an option for public comments. If you would please comply with that, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
You looking for a motion to approve the bid?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the East Walnut Street Parking Lot in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Aye.
You're seconding?
Oh, seconding, yes, I'll second and I it.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Approved tag day requests from the following organizations. Ogusby Ambulance Association is June third. Ogusby American Legion Auxiliary is May twenty-seventh. Ogusby Firefighters Association is, um, March eleventh and November fourth. And we are Ogusby is, uh, May twentieth, and they've asked for alternate dates of June tenth and July twenty-second. I suppose they have.
I'm guessing if that wasn't available is what they're saying, though, yeah.
So.
I will make a motion to approve tag day request.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Uh, next is, uh, approved funding, uh, for the dog park in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to be installed by Illinois Fence Company. And, uh, before we get into that, I, I've, I've got some questions. I called you after you brought that up and asked you to come in and talk to me, you did, and I thank you for it. Uh, I did ask you to hold off placing this on the agenda for a number of reasons. Uh, number one, the construction is scheduled to start in March for a solar project, and that we need that area, that we may need that area to store equipment and material. Uh, I was also concerned about the water lines in the area of the proposed dog park and the digging. I was concerned about the site selection for the dog park, and you agreed that it probably wasn't the best. Uh, I suggested that you meet with JP, the residents of the area where you were looking to build a dog park, and the park board to see if there was a better site could be found. Uh, someplace closer to Route thirty-nine, uh, did you meet with the park board, did you meet with the residents?
We had a meeting that night with you here, Mayor, and you were all for it, but, uh, from my understanding, there was people that told me you were just going along with it, but have no intentions of, of ever building a dog park. So, I mean, uh, that's why you told me I needed a vote, and I'm here to get a vote. I mean, your, your solar panels are going to be just east of the fire station, they're not going to be anywhere near the tower. And how, how, how are you going to get heavy equipment down through that area? Like you say, what are you going to do with it, you can't, can't move heavy equipment in that area, it's all mud, dirt.
And you didn't meet with the residents?
I spoke to a couple of them on my, my journey, yeah, and their, their concern was not the droppings and the urine smell, their concern was the, the high-speed traffic that goes over Third Street. And that's what I got out of them, there was no, they told me there's, there, there ain't going to be no smell as far away as that park is going to be from where their residents, and they weren't concerned about that. They said, the, the, the traffic is worse.
So I was at that park board meeting, um, the thing is, I don't think they had a recommendation of a location yet, right, weren't they still talking about?
We talked about that location, but then Dom said, well, I think you can't use that because they're going to be bringing solar panels in there, and that's where they're going to place the solar panels.
That's not exactly accurate, so they shouldn't need any lay down, they told us they don't need any more lay down, they shouldn't need any more lay down area than where they're just putting it at. But if they would need extra spot, that would be the place that they would use it, because you obviously can't use the.
So we're all hypothetical now, like, literally, we might need the whole city, why did you say that now, like?
Okay, because you can't use the fire station parking lot, and you can't use.
Really, I didn't know.
What, do you want to?
I'm joking, Jason, obviously we're not going to use the fire station parking lot, thank you for that. And I thought about, I thought about other land and talking to people, but they tell me they don't want it that close to an interstate state because of, you know, kids and s- stuff that could happen there, and, you know, child abductions and stuff. They don't like, like that around interstate areas.
So everything you're saying there, I, I agree with you on, the, the, the problem is, we have a park board for a reason. I, I suggest that we use them to come up with where they, because like you're saying, there's probably no perfect location. So to me, having your bar, park board that represents the city and the residents and stuff like that, for them to come with a recommendation, to me, I think it's kind of silly for us to pick a spot and say, this is the spot to do it, if our park board doesn't even come up with one.
They didn't really have an idea where to put it, and that's why I brought that area up. There's been a lot of stuff that's happened in the park, just, I think the park board wasn't even involved then. Well, there was.
My, my, my concern.
But now we need to get involved because Cully's pushing for it, so.
My concern is, why don't you go have a meeting with the residents? Schedule a public meeting.
Dom, I, I've walked that area, I've talked to these people down there, they, they don't have a concern about the dog park. Their biggest concern is the, the traffic, the speed, the cars flying by there all the time. But they didn't have any problems with the, uh, the dog droppings and the urine smell. The problem was the traffic.
Until, until, until they have the droppings and the urine.
Well, I don't, I don't know, that's pretty far away, and like I said, they, they told me they weren't concerned about that smell because it probably would never happen.
Why are you opposed to having a meeting with the residents about it?
Because I've spoken to most of them door, door to door. Do we have a meeting about the solar farm? You want a meeting, call them, I'm sure they'll show up. Can I ask that? Do we meet any of the neighbors of the solar farm, or do we just do it? Because I don't think they're going to be happy when they see all that and they're back here now, but, but now we're not worried about that either, because it was your guys' idea, so. The one thing I'm concerned about, Mayor, you're telling me I got to have a vote on this because it, it's beautifying a, a, a park, which is my department, but you take it upon yourself to, to open up Lehigh Park and start doing work down there without my knowledge? And I didn't see you having a vote for anything.
God, you know, I'll tell you what.
You know, I mean, if, if it's going to be good for you. You know, I mean, if, if it's gonna be good for you, it's gonna be good for the other person. I mean, you can't just do what you wanna do and tell me, Cully, well, you gotta go out and get a vote for it, when you can sit there and do what you wanna do and not have to answer to anybody.
Well, I don't say that I do everything perfect.
Well, I agree.
By any means, but, um,
All I'm asking for, Mayor, is, is, is a, a motion. You wanted, you wanted me to bring it up for a vote, all I want is a vote, and that way I can see who's for it and who's not for it. If it passes, fine, if it doesn't pass, I try.
See, that's not fair necessarily, 'cause I, I'm for the dog park. But I'm not just gonna be for a dog park in a spot that, that you picked without having a, a board or your people or your residents come up with a place.
That was the only spot that we talked about that day, that's the only spot.
That is not correct. I was at that meeting. There was discussions, there was some discussion of Dickinson House, there was some discussion of Lehigh, there was three places.
Suggest that we go to Dickinson House, you can't, you can't.
I understand that. That wasn't my point. My point was that there was discussions of multiple places, and that nothing, nothing was agreed upon. So to me, if you have a park board that represents the city, and they get together to discuss this stuff, and they haven't come up with a conclusion, why should we force a conclusion?
The only other property that was mentioned was by the mayor, he said, "Why don't you look at the Dickinson House? You can go from the, from the south, southeast corner of the building out, but all that's forest and timber, I don't know how you're gonna level all that out."
Cully, didn't we talk about where the, where the best place for the dog park was up by Bex? Didn't you say that was the best?
It's, it's, it's not, I, it, well, y- you could just about put it anywhere, but what, what I was told was you don't want it out by an interstate. You don't want it out there. It's, it's too, you know, you got kids out roaming around and stuff, they, it's just too close to an interstate. And stuff happens, and, you know, I, in town, it'd bring, bring the people into town, and we wouldn't have to worry about strange people coming off the interstate worrying about your kids out there.
Let me ask this for, attorney question here for you. If we're gonna make a new park in an area that doesn't already exist to be a park, is there any other steps that we have to go through on that to make a park district?
No, you don't have to make a park district, but the council needs to approve the use of, of that city property for that purpose.
Exactly. That's what I said, you told me to throw it out, I'm throwing it out, I wanna see who's for it and who's not for it, just.
I'm not against, nobody's against a dog park. I, but I want you to have a meeting with the people in the area first. That's all I requested you to do. And, and you know, as far as the other stuff, and I, I don't have it with me, and I'll have to go back and find it. But you gave a commissioner's report sometime, I think it was in April of twenty-two, about the proposed volleyball courts at Lehigh Park. About the other proposed stuff that was going on in town.
Not real familiar with that. If I was, I maybe didn't fully understand it. But like I said, I mean, it doesn't matter, I don't think I remember voting on it for, voting on it. Where are we at?
I'd be happy to vote on it if, uh, if you have a park board, come together, and they represent the people, and they come up with the best, 'cause no matter where we pick, there is no perfect location in the city.
If we vote on it today.
You don't have a location.
I think it's fine back there. I don't know why, now all of a sudden we're gonna have all these board meetings, all these citizens, you know, we're building a parking lot, we talked to three people in a meeting here, that was it.
It was a public meeting.
We've talked about this for months, and somebody came up here and said that they're against it, that they had a problem with it, anything, no.
How come your park board couldn't come to a conclusion on the location then?
'Cause they didn't really have an idea where, where we're looking at.
Did we bring them up to the volleyball courts? Did they even had a meeting about it? No, they just did it. So now we're gonna have all this red tape because he wants to do something, I get it, but.
At, at least, at least Cully putting in volleyball courts was already in a public park. I don't have, I don't have.
Cully didn't even put them in, from what I understand, so.
I had nothing to do with that. I wasn't even aware of this stuff going on till I read it on the internet.
You made a report on it.
I don't remember.
After he brought it up, probably he didn't know about it.
Telling you to dig it up, I don't remember that.
Okay.
What, what if we did this, guys? Just trying to mediate here. We, we made it public now that we're looking at that location, right, Jim?
Well, that's, that was probably the only location we got right now.
I'm all for a dog park. One hundred percent behind it, it's a great idea. What if we, if we table this just next meeting, get it on the agenda, and we take a vote? And if nobody from the public comes here to say that they're opposed to this, you have my vote.
And if they're for it, they should come to the meeting as well.
The idea is trying to get them to come to the meeting.
You don't, you don't think the park board should come to, I mean, 'cause there's no, there's no parking lot there, there's no shade, and there's no sidewalks to get there.
There is a parking, there is gonna be a parking lot, and the shade.
Oh, now there's gonna be a parking lot?
Well, there, there was, in, in that, uh, thing I got from the city, there was a gravel provided for a parking lot.
Did you look at the bed?
Yeah, I don't see that, I saw eleven thousand dollars for fencing, I saw eleven thousand dollars for fencing.
That was just, just to get it started, but the city, the city, the city can, can cover the rest because it's, it's nothing that somebody else has to do. The city can, can dump gravel, and, uh, the water line, we don't need water lines. I've talked to LaSalle, and LaSalle doesn't even have water at their, their place because.
I'm trying to think if they even have a tree in theirs. They might have one tree, so.
They don't have water there because you can't let dogs drink out other dogs' bowls. They bring their own water, and, and I think Peru has the same thing. They don't need a water line, you bring your own water. I've, I've done it many a times.
If I don't have a motion, I'll consider the thing dying for lack of a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the funding of a dog park in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to be installed by Illinois Valley Fence and Pool.
You didn't even say where.
I, so if Terry's not on the board, obviously you two are, let's, let's cut to the chase here. Put it on the next agenda, and hopefully everyone shows up if they're for or against it.
I'm not against the dog park.
In that location. I'm talking about that location, because clearly we're gonna put solar panels all over in space amounts, so in case there's lightning, they don't get hit or something, I don't know, but, um, I think we should put that up there. So, can we come to an agreement? We're gonna vote on it next week, and it's gonna be based on citizens that come up here for and against, that kinda stuff.
Why don't you put a meeting together with your park board next week?
I get over.
I mean, wouldn't that make sense?
All right, hopefully there's a quorum. They don't make it, we're gonna get over it.
Or are you talking about the citizens?
The citi, you, you get the park board together, you let people know, citizens can come, they can discuss it, they can give their inputs, and then they can talk about it. If you get a consensus of your park board of a location for a dog park, you will have no problem with me voting and supporting for it.
But like I said, that was the location we initially started with.
Do you understand that the conversation that night happened on three different locations and nothing was decided?
Well, it was, it was that location, and Dom brought up the Dickinson House, I don't remember the third location.
Lehigh was another one that somebody brought up.
Well, Lehigh is already being used. Well, I said you could put it in the volleyball court if you wanted to. I mean, if, if, if you're gonna try to.
That square's way too small.
Try to cut out some property and tell me I can't have it, then, then do away with your volleyball court.
Our park board's not like the plan commission to where we have to put it in the paper or anything like that, right? We just have a meeting for it, make it public, let people know.
You know, that, that's fine, don't Tommy, if they, you guys wanna put it on the table, let's put it on the table, we'll get, get the people together, let them talk, and, you know, see how they feel about it. Like I said, I've gone and talked to these people, they have no concerns about dog droppings and urine, everything is concerned about the traffic.
I just don't know why you're trying to push this without getting, I, I don't understand.
I wanted it a long time before.
Like this interconnect that so happens a month before you're going for mayor, really?
No, I, I've.
Somehow this internet connect just happened out of nowhere, like, wow.
Set it at table, and, and you'll get back with us, tell us, give us some direction.
I just, I hate it, put it in, on the table, then all stuff goes, it goes on the table, it never comes off. So, uh, that was my, I wanted to try to get something done before, just, uh, the end of this election term, and thought that might be one good thing to do before, before we leave, so.
Okay, very good. I'll move on then. Uh, approve authorization to go out for bid for the fire hydrant grant. Uh, that's, what, a hundred and thirty-five thousand and twelve fire hyd, fight?
That's, that's what they gave us the grant for. Unfortunately, this has been something that's been taking almost three years to get approved. We finally got the approval for everything. We do have to get, go out for bid for it. Um, the estimate right now is probably significantly more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand, but my goal is to maximize at least all the hundred and thirty-five thousand they're gonna give us. Word on the street I have is, there is three fire hydrants that are unoperable right now, and there are nine degraded ones. But even the inoperable ones are covered by someplace else in the city currently. But this is our opportunity to get to all twelve, hundred percent fully functional.
And what date did we get approved for the grant? What day did we actually receive it, like, this month?
We got the, so this thing went forever. It goes back and forth, like, I think they, we got approved earlier this year, and then we, uh, so then I'm like, "Okay, great, ready to go out for bid," and they're like, "No, no, no, we gotta get you a letter." Okay, so then they give us the letter. They send us the letter, we're like, "Great, we got the letter." No, the letter's just for the mayor to sign. And then the mayor signs the letter, then sends it back, and then we have to get their approved letter version back. That finally came back in, I wanna say, where's that, was it Friday? Friday. So we've been ready for the bid stuff to go for a little bit now. Any other questions on that? I'd like to make a motion to approve authorization to go out for bid for the fire hydrant grant.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullen and.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Uh, the next two systems, uh, is approve zero-three-zero-six-two-three R, a resolution for approving a wind energy conversion system within one and one-half miles of the city corporate limits, and statement of support for the development of the wind, wind energy conversion system in the city of Oglesby.
Is somebody here?
Taking one at a time?
Yes, I would suggest you do that, Dom.
Okay.
Is there a representative here, or was?
Yes, there is a representative here.
I just, so economically, you guys are gonna be profitable with thirteen towers. Or can you phase into like three other phases and there's a ton around us?
Hi, everyone, I'm Dan Turner with UK North America. And, uh, yeah, our towers are bigger and a little taller than towers usually are, and the technology changes all the time. So, yeah, we can get a lot more bang for our buck per turbine.
And so how tall are these turbines compared to normal?
Exact, I, it's over six hundred feet.
I think like eight hundred and fifty feet.
Eight hundred and fifty feet, so, so how, how many stories is that? That could have been a lot, a lot.
Ten, ten foot per story.
So can we see these towers from the city of Oglesby, is my question?
Well, eight hundred, eight hundred feet, I'm, I'm assuming that you would be able to.
Okay.
The, if I understand, looking at the, at the map that's here, the proposed, site, there's only one that's within, or it's, it's just outside of, of one and a half. There's two, there's two parts to this. Um, you know, uh, to make the long and the short in, in simple English, they're looking for our support for this wind project. The second part of that, and that'll be with probably with the benefit agreement, if we agree to support it, then the city would receive a stipend, a yearly stipend of thirty thousand dollars a year. But if we ever opposed what they were doing, or they moved it, somehow they moved it closer, then we would have to give all the money back to Hickre Farms.
I'm hearing a deal that might be too good to be true, so I'm, I'm trying to find where the negative for us is, or why, why they would possibly pay us thirty thousand if they didn't need our support.
Well, the simple reason they wanna, they wanna green energy. I support green energy, but I don't want an eight-hundred-foot tower, uh, in adjacent subdivision. And they, and, and it's part of this, if I understand it correctly, the, what is it? Within a mile and a half, the county can, can give the okay, and we can't do anything about it? Am I correct on that?
I think just the opposite, Dom. You have zoning jurisdiction within the mile and a half.
But if it's mile and three-quarters.
You have no say over it.
We have no say.
Right.
So they could essentially do this project and just exclude the couple that are within the mile and a half anyways, if they really wanted to.
You know, people can show up at the county meeting and express their discontent with them being that close even.
My only real concern about it, I, I, I don't think it's great. I think it's great bringing green energy into the system for the grid and everything. Our engineer did point something out, and now I'm kinda looking at it. Um, 'cause it says that we're gonna give rights for them for the project area. There are some parts on the map that I'm seeing of the project area that cross over into city of Oglesby territory. That is a bit of a concern, uh, for me. I'm kinda curious, 'cause I, so on your map here, you have your proposed locations, and then the alternate locations if you expand, but I'm kinda curious why the project area crosses into Oglesby in a couple spots.
Uh, well, yeah, we don't have turbines.
Well, that would be the, that would be the grid that goes back to the substation.
Yeah, I mean, we have collector lines and things like that, but, uh, no turbines.
Proposed for there.
Yeah.
But the agreement would allow for you to add turbines to the project area. I read it, it does, yeah, yeah.
I was just kinda, I was just kinda curious why the project area crosses over into some of the Oglesby territory, if that's the case, though. That's, that's my only question. I mean, I'm all for the project, but if you're asking for authorization to put things in the project area, the project area, I mean, there's just a tiny little sliver that crosses over. I, I'd really prefer that project area to not cross over into the city of Oglesby.
And so Cedar Point approved it, or are they on board, or were first? Okay, 'cause they're kinda surrounded, I'd love to know what they feel about it, too.
I, I think maybe the, the prudent thing would be to, to table both thirteen and fourteen till we get some more answers. And if council feels more comfortable with saying yay or nay.
Can we counter this agreement with our concerns? Is, is that possible?
Well, you certainly can, I don't know whether they'd be receptive to that.
You'd counter anything.
Why don't we table it and?
Well, let me ask you this, how, how complicated would it be to, to redo the map to where it would exclude the pieces of Oglesby? Would that be a complication or a deal breaker for you?
Uh, I, well, I'm not really, that's not in my lane a little bit, but I would think certainly one of the best.
I think that would be the only concern I would have, would be that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's a big concern to you.
I don't think it should be a concern, but I have to think about ten, twenty, thirty years from now, that if, that all of a sudden now we authorize that, and then all of a sudden now one goes up in somebody's backyard or something like that, so.
Again, like I said, we have no plans at all.
No, I see. I talked to the gentleman too, 'cause they even asked what that green thing down there was, the MET tower, and he said that's because of the impossible expansion, 'cause that's why your box is so up here. As we talked about, they might expand down this area further, but I see the alternate ones up here already. So I don't really think it's a big concern, but I'm just trying to make sure I'm asking the smart questions to not be into an issue.
Yeah, I can do that.
I would, I would appreciate that. So do we wanna just table them for another two weeks then and see?
Table thirteen and fourteen, Jason?
I will make a motion to table resolution zero-three-zero-six-two-three R and zero-three-zero-six-two-three R A.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullen and.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Fifteen is to authorize a one-time payment to the ambulance director Kathy Edens at straight time to one and a half of her vacation hours, allow her to carry over the other half to the next fiscal year. And, um, basically what it is, it's a hundred and seventy-six point two-five hours. It's, uh, fourteen point six-eight days. The vacation hours must be used in the twenty-three, twenty-four vacation year, and the amount of this is five thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and nine cents.
Let me explain this a little bit. So, our structure with our ambulance, we're staffed with all part-time people, and the only full-time employee we have is Kathy. Kathy is salaried at forty hours. She's working sixty-plus hours a week because she basically has to fill any shift that is not covered by a part-timer. And just like with police, there's a short, shortage with EMTs and paramedics. So, she's had several people have injuries, get hurt where they can't cover their shifts. So she's had several people have injuries, get hurt where they can't cover their shifts, so she has to fill in on those. Um, she basically can't get away for more than a few days at a time because she's our emergency fill on everything. And she's selfless and covers all these shifts. Um, I think this is the right thing to do. We're not paying her any overtime. She's working well above and beyond what her salaried hours are. And, uh, I do think we have to look into restructuring that department. And I've been thinking about it. I'm gonna get with the ambulance board and try to come up with some solutions so we can stop this practice of basically abusing her.
I don't know what we'd do without her, so.
Oh, she's, she's amazing.
I think this is more than fair.
So with that, if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion that we authorize a one-time payment to ambulance director Kathy Edens at straight time for half of her vacation hours and allow her to carry the other half over to the next fiscal year.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Sixteen, approve and authorize signature by the mayor and the city clerk of an internet, interconnect agreement generation citing an operation agreement and grant easement agreement between the city of Oglesby and H A U L S C S zero-one-five-two-nine-zero LaSalle LLC and the I M A for the construction and operation of a solar generation site behind the ambulance service building.
Mayor, just, you gotta curious, how long do you think we've been, we've been working on this?
Almost four years.
So it hasn't been just the last two, three months or something like that, right?
We've been, we've been working.
Tommy, it's impeccable though, it really is. So this agreement would be covering where the proposed dog park is as well, correct?
No, that is not correct.
So that's not two different lots, two different areas. So they, it's on the, so how would they put their equipment if they needed to, there'd be another agreement? To cover it or is there already agreement in place? Cause you said they might need more space for unforeseen.
In the, in the, in the buildup, we've got farmland. You're gonna have, uh, I'm sure some heavy equipment out there to level things off.
Yeah, I think, Tommy, so that you understand, the thought is they might need more temporary space to actually construct this facility to store materials and stuff while they're working on the site. But once they're done, it's the site and it's got a lot to do with the area where they're.
So I'll give you a little more detail as well. So we, we obtained a verbal agreement with Bootsy for the hall road that they can use that for access. So they won't be using our access necessarily for the, for the ambulances and all that kinda stuff. So if they believe they have plenty of laydown material inside the, the location as they construct, but if they needed extra, obviously we can't use hall road. Obviously, we can't use the ambulance building. So the other place would be this location that's on the other side of that tower, right where the dog park's being.
But they would've needed agreement, we'd just let them.
We would just, cause we, we own it. We own it.
The grant of easements for the long-term
Okay.
Use of the property, so they won't, so they feel comfortable spending the money and put everything there.
Okay.
There is a map, Tommy, attached to, uh, I think it's the generation citing and operation.
Yeah.
As an exhibit that shows you, you know, the description and the exact location of the facility and, and really where all the, uh, units are gonna go to. Yeah, it's a, it's exhibit A.
I'll believe you, Pat.
It's exhibit A, like page eleven, uh, the.
Yeah, no, I see it.
Yeah. And you can see how there's space behind there, um, which is where the dog park area question is.
Oh, I got you now, okay.
And these are the solar panel layouts in the fencing area.
Oh, yours looks way better. I got you now. Thank you. Is there any other questions somebody has on this?
We got a motion.
I, I don't, I don't think I motioned yet, but I can make a motion to approve or authorize signature with the mayor and city clerk of an interconnection agreement, generation citing and operating agreement and grant of easement between city of Oglesby and Hall S S C, S C S zero-one-five-two-nine-zero LaSalle LLC and I M E A for the construction and operation of a solar generation site behind the ambulance service building.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Seventeen, discuss the, a possible ordinance authorizing limited city contributions towards check valve installation and related matters.
So, um, if you look in the back of your packets, I had fortunately enough, the, the gentleman, the LaSalle, city of LaSalle engineer, uh, reached out to me and, uh, talked to me about, uh, an issue, a program that they have that might be useful for us. And I just wanted to put this out here for discussion, cause it's obviously not, uh, modified for anything for Oglesby yet. So we've had a couple, uh, residents that, uh, that have had some sewer backups in their basement. And even though the city is not legally responsible, this kinda ties into the whole situation of Caritage and Oakwood. Even though the city's not legally responsible, because we didn't do it through negligence, there is, I feel moral responsibility to see if we can solve their issue. So what that ordinance that they have is, it sets money aside that if you had a sewer backup in your home and you can prove that, and you want to have a check valve installed at your home between the sewer, the main sewer and your sewer for your home, that they'll spend, will spend up to fifty percent of the cost. Apparently, these check valves are not very pricey. They're about five, seven hundred dollars. The problem is the installation. Is depending on each situation, how deep it is, how complicated it is. I mean, getting one of these installed can be anywhere up to about four grand. So that's why if you look, LaSalle's even has theirs to where they say that they'll pay up to two thousand dollars splitting the cost with, with somebody. And they set ten thousand dollars aside every year for this. So I was thinking, you compare a size like us, I would think something like, my recommendation would be, we set four or six thousand aside. That still gives a couple per year if they wanted to do something like this.
Jason, let me, let me ask you what, what's causing this. If I understand it correctly, it's the lift station by the, uh, by the trailer court.
And we've had, um, what I wanna say, we've had ordered some, um, equipment to, to alert us and to stop before this gets to be a point where it's backing up.
So each lift station's got two, two large pumps. And, um, normally it's very rare that both pumps would ever go down at the same time. But this issue came up when we had that massive rainstorm issue and there was so much penetration in it, they overworked so hard. And remember me talking about the catheters, the diapers and the towels and stuff like that? Both pumps got locked up at the same time. And when that happens, then obviously it doesn't, it takes only a matter of hours with all this water coming in. That will eventually overwhelm the system. So anybody that would be too low and doesn't have a check valve, they could possibly get a backup. So when that happened, we had a system that, that's like some kinda, correct me if I'm wrong, if I say it incorrectly. If I say it wrong, there's a cellular system that it's supposed to make a call out to say that some, but apparently the system was old and it didn't work. It failed. So when this happened and they fixed the pumps, um, we ordered new parts for a new dialer system that would notify personnel if there'd ever be an issue again. Apparently, all that stuff was on back order. Is it still scheduled to come in next week final? Finally, next week it's looking to come in. So in the meantime, that can still happen. And this most recent one, I haven't put it out, I got pictures of it. I'm thinking about putting it on Facebook, but I always wanna put stuff here. We got fruit of the loom underwear and jeans. I have no idea how somebody gets a pair of jeans down the toilet or something, but.
Well, I'm, 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 that's my question. With, with everything, and I've seen those pictures, you've got towels, you've got underwear, you, what, what don't you have on, down there?
So.
How do they get it down to flush?
I, I don't know. I don't know.
Really good toilets, Mayor. But there is.
Really good toilets.
But there is a couple things.
High pressure.
So, so keep in mind, so there's been a lot of different things that we've done. So if we ran out of power, that could be an issue. So we actually put a, a generator there with gas to prevent that problem. But I mean, you still got the issue of people throwing things down there. There is another type of pump that is made, I believe you call it, do you call it grinder or chopper? So we're gonna look into that. I have no idea what the cost of that is. I mean, I'd prefer people to stop putting towels and things like that down the toilet, but. I, I don't know either. I don't know either.
I don't have a problem looking at this stuff, but I can't figure out how the hell they're getting it down the toilet.
So my issue is we'll have two to three people a year is what, if we're doing that.
Well, if you look at, if you look at.
And how do we choose those three over everyone else in the city?
So if you look at the, if you look at the ordinance, if you look at the ordinance, it says it's only people that's had a problem in the last two years, right? And to my knowledge, we've only had two houses that had the issue last.
What if you have eight people come forward? How do we pick from those eight people? Is, is it first come, first served? The first six thousand or four thousand? Get it, do we put them in a lottery?
I mean, that's why we're, that's what we're talking about it here. I would think it'd be first come, first served basis is kinda.
I think that might've said that, Terry. I read that quickly last Friday when I got home. I think it might've said first come.
I would think it'd be the same as we do.
So do you open it up on a certain date then? Because the people who didn't get it that particular year, they don't get carried over to the next year probably. Is it open up like May first, say, and then it's first person to put in on May first gets first preference?
Well, the first thing I'd wanna talk about is, do we wanna do this program? Yes or no? I think it makes sense. So if we wanna do the program, do we wanna open up the first year to where there's more money in it the first year? So it allows more people that's having an issue that they could get in to do this?
So how do they approve the, their sewer backed up? Is, do we track that? I.
So we don't, but they would have their, they would have their pictures, insurance and all that kinda stuff, yeah.
Well, sometimes insurance doesn't cover that, cause I had it happen at my older residence. And, uh, unless you have like the, the sump pump coverage or some sort of special water coverage, and the city took no responsibility either, obviously. So I basically had a finished basement that was severely damaged. It was all on my dime. So insurance, I mean, I would say pictures.
I mean, we're. And those would be the people that probably would rather help more, cause they just paid out of pocket to fix their whole basement.
I'd like to see us take a look at how we can, how we can prevent it even from happening.
Well, so, so that's what, we got the information thing for, that's gonna, it's gonna call us and let us know if the things are, are gonna work. But I mean, that's still a problem. If the power goes out long enough, that's why we got the other, uh, the generator in there. That's why we're looking at these chopper pumps now and stuff for what we can do. But I mean, there's still no system that's apparently perfect. Um, one of the things I did talk to their engineer about, and I'll probably be talking to our engineers when we start doing different stuff with our waste water treatment plant. Again, he said he hasn't looked at our system, but, and again, he's not our engineer, but one of the things he talked about was, he says, I think that lift station was probably overwhelmed when everything else expanded around it with the city. So that lift station might be getting more than what it's initially designed to do.
Is, is the lift station too small?
Perhaps for the size. That's one of the questions he had. I have not talked to our engineers about that at all. But one of, you know, one of the goals I had was obviously to expand another lift station out west if we're gonna get an industrial area or something like that. So I'd like to see if I can combine those items together, but that might be for a future, you know, date.
I think the program has merit.
Okay. So do you wanna think we can try to put something that puts it together for, for Oglesby's format and stuff and then?
We could, yeah.
We can discuss if we wanna, how much to do.
This one isn't a first come, first served basis. They have to provide proof such as dated photographs, dated video, cleaning bills, records or reports to the city regarding a backup within the last two years. They have to contact a plumber and have their lines cleaned and camered to ensure that there's, uh, you know, they're meeting all of the specs that you want. And it has to be in proper operating condition before you'll spend money to put this valve in for them. So there's a lot of good stuff in here, I think. Um, and you and I can work to come up with something if you want.
I just kinda wanna know what people thought about it and if it's something we wanted to, to do. If you, do we wanna put a higher limit on it for the first year to let more people get into it? And then keep it at a low number? I mean, if LaSalle's doing ten thousand a year, we're probably like at four thousand a year then or something equivalent.
Well, you could start with that and see if you have a lot of interest in it. If so, you could always make a motion to upgrade the program for the first year or something to accomplish some of it.
Yeah, we could contact that subdivision and ask them how many people got backed up in the last two years.
Sounds like we've had.
Be, and it's the same area too.
It's, it's homes on, there's a, there's a couple homes on Sunset.
On the same street, if I'm not mistaken.
From my knowledge, I believe it was two homes, but I mean, that's all that, that reached out to us. I don't know if there's more, there could've been.
Okay, let's take a look and see what we come up with.
Okay.
Discuss matter relating to the F O P and I B E W retirees and city insurance. And what, what happens here is, uh, several years ago, under a previous administration, they took away, can I say this? For the, for the F O P. They can't come and go off the city insurance. Say if we had a, um, a policeman that took a, uh, a job, say retired from, um, the city of Oglesby and went to work as a security officer for G T I. Uh, and they would provide him medical insurance. He could take the job and get G T I's medical insurance. And that would save the city of Oglesby money. But under their present, if he, if he takes the job and comes off the insurance, and then in a year or two, he can't come back on it. Where the I B E W, they can come and go off the retiree insurance so long as they're covered by another group plan. The difference is the I B E W pays twenty-five percent more in medical premiums than the F O P retirees.
So you wanna change that too? I, I think whatever we do needs to be the same throughout the whole city. That's my stance on it. I don't think, not insurance.
I think.
It costs everybody the same thing, so it should be standard across the board, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
I think they're two totally different unions and I really don't know if they care if they each agree together. In a perfect world, yeah, but, but this time, especially since we've had a signed contract and now we've been here three and a half years and the last hour, we're gonna try to change this right before.
It was two years. I think it was two years that we had the last union contract, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
And you negotiated for how long before that?
Yeah. No, I, I agree with what you're saying about that, that, you know, I'm not a big.
Clearly, they weren't worried about it then, so why are we all worried about it now? Is there a certain person or play favorites or is it just we're trying to get everything done before an election? That's my question.
Actually, I'll tell you, try to help out some people that may decide to leave and wanna come back, uh, on the, on the insurance.
As far as.
Care on the stick here then, so.
As far as all those other changes with the different percentages and stuff like that, I, I'm worried that those are too fine of level of details to try to. Those should probably be in the negotiation things. But I think the part, part about allowing the F O P to be able to go on and off, um, not only would that match the other one, uh, that we have, but I think it only benefits the city. It doesn't hurt us at this point.
No, it's a, it, you can't lose, we're not gonna lose any money on it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, right now, nobody's going off because they don't wanna lose it.
So if anything.
Why did they give it up how many ever years ago from that past council that we don't know about? Why would they give it up in negotiations then?
I don't know. I, I can't answer that question.
Why, why did the city go that route, Tommy? Is my question, because it's kind of a, a win-win for us to allow them to go on and off. I mean, right now, we can either pay the premium.
F O P was the one that said, hey, we, we wanna take this away. You know what I mean?
It wasn't, it wasn't the F O P that wanted to, uh, to give it up, but I, I don't know. I wasn't there. Uh, I wasn't involved in it. Um, so I can't answer that question.
So that's why I'd be willing to, I, I think a good idea would be just to allow them to come and go for the F O P. I don't know about changing the other percentages stuff. I think that gets into too many details.
I think we should wait thirty days, but.
We're gonna vote on it next meeting, so. Go on, boys.
Let's move along to old business. Anything under old business?
Uh, I guess I got one item. I was gonna use my reports though, but the iron plant is now fully online, uh, with the updated resin for the filtering for the water. And it was, uh, paid for with the ARPA funds.
Is that why the water's really rusty right now? I have been getting a lot of questions about that.
I had one question about that. As far as I know, that, that should not be related to that. So there is, I have another report on, uh, hydrant flushing that's gonna start though, but other than that, I do not know the answer to that question you asked.
And the second power outage, is there any update on that or why it happened again?
The second one? You talking about the, the one?
Cause I didn't see anything. You posted all day about the first one. I don't know if you posted about the second one. That was at like midnight, one in the morning, something.
Morning?
Why, was there one last night too?
There was a lightning strike for four seconds.
The equipment operated.
Well, I wanna say it was last.
Came back?
No.
Last week maybe?
We're talking about six days ago at two thirty in the morning, there, we believe it to be a lightning strike. They, they got out there, they could not find any damage, and they tried to reset the system and it came right back up. So then they start looking for damage, they, they didn't see anything, they believe it to be a lightning strike. That's why I was asking the other questions about when the other stuff came up, about the grounding rods. Because I'm told Phoenix substation has some form of grounding rods around the outside, but it still might not be up to the same code that we have today.
Didn't we hire a consultant to look into that though?
For what, the lightning strikes?
No, the, the power outage before, you know, that, before they hooked it back up at four o'clock in the morning.
Yes.
Yeah, we brought.
Yeah, he came in, and that's when they found the, uh, they found the issue, remember the component was higher up? It's in, it's in the substation, but it was higher up on the part of the transformer. That's why they didn't find it that night when they kicked everything over, they had to take it off completely and then they found it basically, it was overheated contact.
They had a bad switch that went to ground. And takes time to, to really to switch around that jumper around to get people back on.
That's understandable.
Public comments.
I got one Mayor, and I'm gonna say it from here because I'm having a hard time standing.
Okay.
I'm gonna sit right here, I'm gonna say what I gotta say.
Okay.
What I gotta say is, before the last meeting, you didn't, you, because you are the mayor. You didn't even say to invite Connor Lorden, the two hundred and thirty pound runner-up state, uh, double A champ, I think, you know, the runner-up to come and, and cheer. Because I guarantee you, when Mayor Scott's son got second and Frank Valley got second, that was a big thing. And it was before the last meeting, I mean, you had plenty of time to contact him. Do you know how that kid worked? He was in crushing calves, and then he was with the Cavaliers, worked his butt off, he wasn't a coaching kid, worked his butt off. And what respect does he get to Oglesby? He doesn't even get a curtain call. He got a call when he followed through town, that was nice, but that was the people with the team and stuff. What did you do, Mayor? I didn't see you do nothing. This is the second meeting. I told my wife, I go, well, Connor will be there tonight because, you know, Mayor will probably see that he didn't bring him in the first meeting. So let's bring him in tonight and congratulate him. That's second in the state, at least can you see about getting a sign to put out there, runner-up Connor Lorden? You know, I know it's a lot to ask, and I know you're not gonna be here, but, you know, I think it would be nice to, on your way out, you get him a sign.
I'm, I'm sure the council will consider that, I did recognize him that night.
No, you didn't, you didn't, I, I, I watched every beat, I don't tell because.
Don't, don't tell me I didn't recognize him. Don't tell me I didn't recognize him, I did.
Jim Cullen and all the time, I'm thinking, did Jim get that department or did the mayor? Because everything that Jim wants to do, Mayor has a problem with. So, I mean, it's pretty simple. If I can see it, everybody in Congress can.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner reports.
Austin Cullen in Oglesby, I'm sure you all know me. I just wanted to say regarding the dog park, um, I think the whole business about convening the, uh, park board to talk about the dog park is a pretty transparent. Attempt to just stifle it, um, until after the election. Um, I, now I wanna say one thing, okay, I wanna be clear about one thing. I think it is perfectly okay to think something is a bad idea. If you don't like it, perfect. Uh, decent people can disagree on things without being disagreeable. But I do think we have an obligation to be honest about where we truly stand, not on this issue, but just all the issues, especially in the midst of election season. That said, I personally support the dog park, I think any amenities we can add to the city are crucial if we wanna bring people into the city and broaden our tax base. Uh, therefore, I also think the improvements at Lehigh were a great idea, and I wanna commend whoever came up with it. Uh, the issue is, um, and maybe it's because I came in late, I don't know, it was being discussed before I came in. But, uh, who did come up with it? Because apparently, judging from tonight's meeting, it wasn't the commissioner of public property. I, I'm just curious, where did this individual receive, receive statutory authority to spend this money? Because as far as I'm aware, city ordinance only grants park-specific powers to the commissioner of public property two point zero, three point zero, seven zero. And further dictates the city councils, a collective body must authorize any improvements to city property two point zero, three point two zero. My question is, why didn't this happen? And if this doesn't need to happen theoretically, hypothetically, could the commissioner of public property unilaterally choose to spend the money to build the dog park? If it's under a certain amount? I, I think a lot of confusion could be avoided if this council had avoided mixing and matching departments. At least one candidate for mayor, mentioned in the paper today, who's actually not in the room, has said that they had shifted departments back to how they were. It would be my hope that the next council does this regardless of whoever gets elected mayor.
Thank you.
Is there an answer to that?
Pardon?
Is there an answer to that as to who authorized the expenditure of those funds to build those?
Well, Commissioner Cullen, and, and I believe it's April, and I, I pulled it out in the, uh, in the minutes. Reported on the, uh, activity at Lehigh Park.
Well, he reported on it, but who initiated that, who initiated that project, clearly it wasn't him.
He did, he reported it in his department.
But he's probably just repeating what his director of parks told him, so I'm just curious, who was the one that initiated that? And where did they get the statutory authority to spend that money?
I believe it was started before I had any knowledge of it. Okay. Just saying. I just, uh, I just, uh, I just cited the, uh, the commissioner's report in the minutes.
Okay, but that was it? You, you had nothing to do with it?
Pardon?
That was not one of your projects, you had nothing to do with it? You weren't the one that authorized the city to spend that money on the parks, or?
Authorized what money?
The money that we spent to build the improvements to parks. I'm just curious, cause clearly it wasn't him, so who did it?
Well, he, he read the report that, uh, he read, he read the report that the, uh, the parks guy gave him.
Who authorized it, I just think it's kinda concerning that we're spending taxpayer dollars and we don't know who's authorizing the expenditure funds. Little, little concerning.
Well, would, why don't you talk to the parks commissioner, maybe he can give you some answers?
Yeah, and as you clearly stated during this meeting, he doesn't know who started it, so.
He doesn't know what's going on in his parks department, is that what you're saying?
I mean. I'm for you, yeah, well, I.
That's because, like I told.
Well, I mean, that's nice electionery, but, uh, at the same time, uh, I just.
Worked with.
Oh, that's, 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 that's unnecessary, but, uh, that is unnecessary, but I just, uh, I think it's concerned as to where this money came from. And perhaps if we don't know where the money came from or who authorized the construction of that, since clearly he did it, maybe there needs to be some sort of. Maybe the information needs to be, why, because who knows who started that? I just think it's kinda concerning that nobody knows who initiated that.
We'll, we'll, we'll get through it for you and get all of your answers.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner reports.
Oh, I have nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Nothing tonight.
Um, hydrogen flush is looking to start on, uh, April tenth, uh, for streets. Um, we do have a second quote looking like it's gonna be coming in soon, they may, they reached back out today for the, uh, lines that were concerned about being redrawn to the west side of town. And the pre-construction meeting for the fiber optic thing is finally happening. Um, so later this week, uh, should get presented with the master build-out plan and hopefully by next meeting, I'll, I'll be able to say where the areas are going, what the timeline is and everything. So I have not seen it yet, that's all I got.
I got just a couple things, uh, the I, I M U A scholarship deadline is March tenth. This is, this scholarship is open to all high school seniors who live in Oglesby. Scholarship is for a thousand dollars. If anybody needs additional information, uh, it can be obtained from the clerk's office. Uh, it seems like an ever-ending battle at times, the city of Oglesby will modify its ordinance on issuing building permits. To include the name of the contractor who would do the work. Uh, that, should a contractor not be signatory or approved contractor, then the work, and does work in the city. The city could subject contractor to monetary damages. A resident got a building permit, hired a contractor to do the electrical work at their home, and the work did not pass inspection. The city had revoked this contractor's license due to the same issue at another rent, residence in Oglesby sometime back a couple of years. Guess what can I say is, you can't just hire somebody because they're the cheapest. And what's ironic is, when the electrical inspector goes out there and the guy, and if the work can't pass inspection, there's a problem. I, I do have one other thing, uh, I kinda read and, and was a little bit taken back. You know, I know it's easy to criticize and we gotta have thick skin sometimes. Uh, people wanna put their own spin on what they say. The record, uh, will show, um, what we did and didn't do, or what we said and didn't say. But what concerns me is, I'm not hearing anything about what the, about what the city did do. It lowered its electric rates for commercial customers by fifteen percent in the last four years. That the city of Oglesby electric residential rates are about thirty percent lower than Amheron and ComEd. And the city's water rates are comparable to other cities. And I wasn't aware the city was concerning raising any rates. The city has operated in the black for the last four years. The city has been in compliance with the EPA. We are scheduled to start construction of a new wastewater plant in twenty-four. The city has not kicked the can down the road, it has addressed each and every issue. And that's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Augerberry.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Vavaro.
Aye.